Work that we can here for the constituents of the City of Holland. In your name we pray. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Belinda. Next item on our agenda are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine and they will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the public or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and then it will be placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before we do that, Brenda, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
Yes. 4A, excuse the absences of council members Byrd and Corbin. 4B, approve the minutes of the August 7, 2024 regular meeting and August 14, 2024 study session. 4C, accept executed oaths of office. 4D, authorize to utilize the night drop for the deposits at Huntington Bank. 4E, a utility easement at Nuvar East. 4F, grant of utility easements for the Holland City fiber projects. 4G, the ultrasonic 15,000 capital budget amendment. 4H, property acquisition at 637 Hastings Avenue. 4I, text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, final adoption set for September 4, 2024. 4J, a claim filed against the city. 4K, approve the budget for city's portion of the Holland Board of Public Works 32nd Street Water Main Project. 4L, approve the Michigan Department of Transportation agreement for Columbia Avenue Reconstruction Project. 4M, traffic change to add a handicap parking space with van accessibility and relocate a handicap parking space in Lot 7C downtown. 4N, a text amendment to Section 29-38 Joint Building Sewers, final adoption for September 4, 2024. 4O, the May financial reports. 4P, the fiscal year 2025, beginning of year budget amendments. 4Q, approve a sub-grant agreement for RAP 2.0 grant for the Holland Community Ice Skating Park. 4R, approve the purchase of one hybrid police detective car. And 4S, the International Festival of Holland Approval of Entertainment Agreements.
Great. Thank you, Brenda. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda? Seeing none, any member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there either. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Moved by Vreeman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Sol. Any discussion? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Vreeman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Schulteis?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, we provide the opportunity for the public not only to attend our meetings, but to be able to give comment at all of those meetings. And it doesn't just happen at our regular council meetings. It happens at our study sessions, as well as all of our board, committee, and commission meetings as well. This is an opportunity for you as the public to be able to address council and talk to us about what you think is important. But please remember, this is one-way communication. It's an opportunity for you to be able to speak to us, but we don't engage in conversation or discussion at this time, nor do we answer questions. But if there's a question, that staff may be able to circle back after the meeting, or perhaps tomorrow or later in the week, may be able to answer that question for you. We do have some rules that we ask you to follow. One is that you may speak only one time during the meeting. You're limited to five minutes. There are three lights on the dais to assist you. There's a red light, a yellow light, and a green light. The green light means you're doing well on time. The yellow light means that your time has expired. And the red, or excuse me, the yellow light means you have one minute left and the red light means your time has expired. And we are very strict about that. We do ask that when you come to the podium, you please state your name and the municipality that you live in so that we know that whether you're a resident of the City of Holland or not. Now, having said that, is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Sure. My name is Emily Jip and I am a Lake Town Township resident. Okay, and you're going to have a tough act to follow. My name is Emily Jip, as I just indicated, and I am running for Circuit Court Judge in Alligan County. So I'm sorry that Mr. Corbin can't be here, but I did have an opportunity to address the council back in April, April 17. Kind of shared with you guys a little bit about my work history, my family history, and my goals for the bench. And so, we just had a pretty successful election and hopefully it went smoothly here in the City of Holland at the various precincts. I was able to get 48.75% of the vote, and that's in a three-way race, so I am feeling good, but still trying to make sure that people have an opportunity to meet me and if there's questions, that I am available. I am still pushing to bring Drug Treatment Court back to our community. There's hope that maybe we could get grant funding in October. Obviously, we're just in August, so I don't have an update in regards to that. Other than that, another thing that I've kind of heard as I've been on the campaign trail is, you know, a feeling that there's a disconnect between members of the community and what exactly a Circuit Court Judge does, or what the Circuit Courts do for residents of Alligan County. So I've started to kind of spitball an idea of maybe once a quarter going to the different townships or communities, maybe more frequently if it seems like there's a big interest, and just kind of having a state of the Circuit Courts discussion with members of the community so that they can feel that we're being open and honest and transparent and they have more faith in the system just because it feels more accessible to them. So, just as a quick reminder, a Circuit Court Judge has jurisdiction over family law matters such as divorces, child custody disputes, personal protection hearings. They have jurisdiction over civil matters where the amount contested is over $25,000. Civil matters where maybe a municipality is being sued. And then also over criminal matters if defendants are facing more than a year of incarceration, so felony-level offenses. I have been an attorney for 15 years. I've lived in Lake Town Township since 2016. I see a real need to kind of bring some positive energy to the City of Alligan and to the Circuit Court bench. And so that is why I threw my hat in the ring and continue to spend most nights doing things like this and boring you all. So I would really appreciate if anyone reaches out to you and says, "Oh, I don't know about this, Emily Jip," that you point them in my direction because I all day, every day try to be accessible so that I can answer questions. And other than that, thank you for what you all do because this is a very functional, positive meeting to come to. So, thank you very much and would appreciate your consideration in November or passing that on to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anna Henrickson-Zeland. Good evening, council, and thank you for what you do. In 2020, when the anti-discrimination city ordinance was passed by the sitting city council of that time, a comment was repeated by the councilman Hoekstra and councilman Byrd that laws cannot legislate morality. Morality is a conscious decision decided by each individual about their personal responsibility to decency. That definition does not consider psychological imprinting of our times, 2024. The ordinance was to include specifically a particular people group who determine themselves sexually orientated. This means sexual thinking and conduct, identity and expression. This also meant that people of this persuasion can express their identity openly and freely with no moral constraints. The City of Holland has become known for a pride celebration financially supported by the tax money through the DEI office. The budget is approved by you, council, each year. The ordinance has influenced and advanced the cause of sexual conduct throughout our community. The inclusion has promoted discrimination against Holland's faith-based community. 2025 school year has started and children will be asked to state their gender, boy or girl, to comply with this category of discrimination protection. This also means that sexual orientation is taught to children so they are equipped to choose to express their behavior in accordance with what they imagine themselves to be. This opens children's innocence to know these options. These options come from the educational system, not from the child's family's values. In fact, these values are not even acknowledged or considered. It is clear that sexual orientation inclusion is strongly against any religious knowledge that a creator God does not make mistakes in making humankind male and female with specific attributes to each other, to each gender. The children's religious expression, faith expression, will be ignored and discouraged in the public environment. Parents should be assured that children will be educated without bias to support family values. This is vital to a child's mental health. You will say that the City of Holland does not dictate the school boards their policies. My point is that you influence them by their lawmaking, by your lawmaking. You are complicit, in other words. Please, City Council, revisit the ordinance and support morality and religious speech and exercise as was promised 2020 by your city lawyer. This is called integrity, and I call each one of you to consider this. It is your responsibility. The November election will bring drastic changes depending on who wins. Are you prepared to protect your community, or will you comply to your own self-interest? I'm very concerned at how quickly things are changing, and you need to acknowledge it too. What your private beliefs are, are now imposing. And it is something for you in your laws that you've made to look at. If you would look at the ordinance and then you would look at your policies, for instance, for the bandshelf. The policy was made a long time ago, under three years ago. And now that policy has held at bay any religious expression on the bandshelf. Change it, please. This is a discrimination that your ordinance is stated and promised by the lawyer that we would be protected, but now we can't even use the bandshelf. Any religious activity has to be done in the grass. That's not right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda, under unfinished business, traffic changes, parking restrictions on 24th Street between State Street and Central Avenue. And I would be looking for a motion from council to take this off the table.
Moved.
Moved by Vreeman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Shay. Do we need to do a roll call on this, Vince? We do this so rarely.
Right. I don't think you do. If any council member wants a roll call, they may certainly request that and then you do have to do a roll call.
All right. We're going to start with a voice vote and if anybody complains about it, then we'll move forward from there. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? I'm going to take that as motion passes. This is off the table. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. And I not only introduced this tonight, but as Brian White is doing that thing that many of us know, he's taking his first child to college for the first year tonight. So, I am pinch hitting for Brian. I'll do my best. As talked about, and why you just took that off the table is because we use the process again. Whenever we're proposing a traffic control order, we first bring it to you. You approved one of these on consent agenda just earlier tonight. And then we notify the surrounding neighborhood to let them know what we're proposing to do so we give an opportunity to answer any questions and provide any feedback that might come through us to you. So what this is, is you may be aware that Holland Heights School in the Holland Public School District is undergoing renovation this year. So they have a one-year relocation of that school to this location. And along 24th, the school asked us if they could, as demonstrated on your handouts and in the packet and also on your screen, put in some proposed no parking areas. And that just facilitates safe drop-off and pickup during those school hours. You'll see it doesn't apply during weekends or when schools not, you know, when school wouldn't be in session. So we took a look at this. We're prepared to roll this out depending on your vote tonight and are recommending this. I will say that we did get a comment from the neighborhood. And just concern about that in some of these instances, that it, I think staff and teachers maybe park and take up other spots on the road. And if we could encourage that, I did send a note to the school. And I know in other instances, they've been really responsive to help remind those that are working at the schools to keep on-street parking available for other people. Again, when there is public parking though, people are allowed to park in those public spaces. But did just want to share that comment. I think that's in your packet also, or will be added to your packet. I think we just reserved it through the clerk's office, but that was basically the gist of the comment that we had. And again, this would be something that we would recommend for you to take action on as outlined tonight.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Shay.
So, just about this comment, does that lead us to believe that they, these people that commented, are utilizing street parking quite often if they're noticing that there's less of it?
I don't think, I don't, I'm looking at Brenda to see if it mentioned. It kind of came in a couple different ways, so I don't know how the second time it was presented. I know the first time it was presented, just concerns that on-street parking will remain on 24th Street will be taken up by school administration and teachers. So we encourage them to send that on to us. And again, that would be the remaining on-street parking that's not limited by this. So just passing on that concern, I don't think it was "don't do this." But again, legally, functionally, people can park in public areas where they're allowed to park. But we have passed that on to the schools just to say, hey, can you encourage your folks that there's other places for them to park onsite?
So we can infer that people value on-street parking from that?
I'll let you draw that conclusion.
That's a statement. Thank you.
All right. Any other, any other questions for staff? No? All right. What is the, oh, Mr. Vreeman, sorry.
Just a comment, just that we clarify too, that parking is still available from four o'clock through the evening during the summer hours, given this change. It's just the school hours that, no parking, correct.
Any other questions? What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to approve.
Moved by Raymond. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Vreeman. Any discussion? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Raymond?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Schulteis?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item number nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to giving the public the opportunity to speak to us in person at our meetings, we also have an email address where that email will come to all council members. That is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Again, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. We take those emails, read them in between our regular meetings, and if we have any, we accept them into the record at this time. We don't read them out loud at the meetings, but council has reviewed them. We do not have any this evening, but I always like to make that note for folks that that email address is out there if you would like to get an email. That would be, send an email that would be received by all council members. Next item on the agenda, item number 10, adoption of ordinances, 1055 Lincoln Avenue rezoning request. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And yes, this is also a recommendation for you to take action on through a roll call tonight. Steve Peterson is going to introduce you to this, give a little bit of a history on this as this has come before you once before. And potentially, I think there's an applicant here that may or may not also like to speak to this. I'll let Steve handle that. The last thing from a staff perspective that I'll just highlight in the staff recommendation, there's multiple reasons for the staff recommendation, but I think it's important to point out that we really view this as a safety issue as it relates to where a potential access road is to a busy intersection. In fact, a MDOT intersection that would be aligned with a access point directly across the street on Lincoln. So, I'm sure Steve would highlight that too, but just bring that to your attention. And thank you, Steve, for going through this recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith. Sounded like Keith was going to pinch it for me, too. So, yes, this is a rezoning request in front of you from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of this rezone. The rezoning is on your screen here. It might be a little bit hard to see, but it's actually the small little green triangle there at the bottom of that aerial photo. So, the piece of property is that little triangle of 1055 Lincoln. It is about .19 acres or a little over 8,000 square feet. And if you're really familiar with that spot, as Keith mentioned, there is an existing curb cut that is directly across from the Russes Drive. That's what's out there today. There's also, that little triangle is really formed by the drive there at the manufactured housing development there and that row of trees. So when you're out there, it doesn't actually look like it's part of the manufactured housing development, but it is. It is part of that project. It is zoned manufactured housing. And the request is to move it to CMU, the corridor mixed use. These couple maps here try to illustrate that a little bit. So again, you see that little triangle there in that darker color? That's the manufactured housing zoning district. That red is the CMU, so all of that property to the north is in that CMU. In order to develop the CMU property, you really need to provide access through the same zoning district. Again, the reason for the rezoning request. As Keith has mentioned, one of the big drivers here is to provide as safe as access as we can. By moving that as far south away from, away from 31, it provides much better access into the site. Again, if you're really familiar with that area, you know there's another driveway a little bit further north, closer to 31, which they certainly could use. But it's both ours as well as MDOT's preference. MDOT has jurisdiction here. We don't have a whole lot to say. But it would be both of our preferences to move that as far south as possible, which again, is the reason for the rezoning. The map on your right is the future land use map. As you can see, we actually designated this in that CMU district. So from a future land use perspective, the plan is that eventually that little corner would go, would be rezoned to CMU, so their request is consistent with our master plan request. Again, Keith mentioned a little bit of history with this project. This was in front of both the Board of Appeals. They needed a variance. It was in front of the Planning Commission. They needed to get their site plan special use. Those groups have either approved or recommended approval of all of these different aspects. When it originally came to City Council for the rezone, it was actually voted four to three to approve, but you need five votes to approve the rezoning. So the rezoning portion did not get approved, so they are asking for that again. We did make sure to check with the City Attorney's Office whether it was allowed for them to basically reapply with really no changes occurring. And obviously, they told us that that is permitted, so that's why, that's why we're here tonight with this request. So again, the recommendation in front of you is for, to rezone it from the manufactured housing to CMU. That is what a staff, as well as the Planning Commission, has recommended.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right. What, yes, oh yeah, Ms. Rowan.
I'm sure you explained it really well, but I'm not connecting. What is the anticipated future use? You used the CMU, but like, what does that mean exactly?
Yeah, so corridor mixed use, I guess I would describe that as our general commercial district. So, the site plan that has been approved on this is for a gas station.
Is it large enough for a gas station?
Yeah, it is about five acres, so it is plenty big enough for a gas station. There's actually enough area left over that the plan that has been approved does have sort of an outlot there to the east side to allow for possibly other development. We haven't approved anything else. I know they've indicated at this point that they may not do the gas station and from the rezoning portion of it tonight, I guess I would just kind of remind everybody that the rezoning stands on its own, absent any kind of development. But that is what, you know, would be allowed to be developed under an approved plan right now if they didn't change anything from what the Planning Commission has already approved. They'd be able to do that gas station.
And just so I understand, that little triangle is the five acres?
The little triangle is the .19 acres. The, if you look at that zoning map, all of that red to the north is the five acres.
Okay, because I, I'm familiar with the area that you're talking about and I thought you were referring to five acres being that triangle because it doesn't, I don't think.
Right, yeah, no, I'm sorry.
I was going to cry, you know, BS on that, but no.
You should hear Steve's fish stories.
Well, I just wanted clarification to understand. I do understand there is that large parcel. That's the five acres and this is a portion of that, but it's zoned something different so you want to keep that continuity of the larger parcel to go with the smaller parcel.
Right, and in order for them to develop that larger parcel, they need access to it. You have to get access through the same zoning district. So the request is to rezone that about 8,000 square foot triangle to CMU so that they can do that. I guess, I know it's in the report, I guess I'll just mention, the property owner to the north does have an easement to, you know, so it's already encumbered with an easement for access.
Okay.
But it's the, it's really just the zoning aspect that's holding that back.
Okay, thank you. And then the MDOT piece of it, you said?
Well, it's that, this is M40. Lincoln in this stretch is M40. So it's really MDOT's jurisdiction for where curb cuts can be located. So it's really their call. So they certainly could permit a curb cut to be closer to 31 than what we would like. I guess I just wanted to point out that we don't have that jurisdiction on this particular stretch of M40.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Any other questions for staff? What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to approve.
Moved by Sol. Is there support?
Or?
Support by Vreeman. Any discussion? Seeing none. Just again, a reminder for council, Steve mentioned this. It takes five votes for this to pass. Even if it was four to three in favor, it would still fail. So Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Sol?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Schulteis?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, air the gifts. Item 12, Echo 6.1. Brenda, would you please review the gifts for us?
Okay. The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. For the Downtown Development Authority, a $100 donation from Paul and Jane Lindemuth for downtown flowers and beautification in honor of Elle and Marcia McGeehan. And for Windmill Island Gardens, $4,059 from the 2024 tulip dig at Windmill Island Gardens. It's recommended these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to the donors.
Great. Thank you. Any discussion on that item or questions for that? I just have a comment in that regard. Windmill Island, $4,000 in tulip dig, that's over 400 buckets of tulip bulbs out of the island alone, which I think is really pretty impressive because they do that. And that does not include Window on the Waterfront or Centennial. So they're doing a great job with that. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to approve, express, and deposit.
Moved by, moved very efficiently by Rowan.
Support.
And supported. And supported by Sol. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item thirteen, communications from our city manager, Mr. Van Beek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, viewing public. No study session next week. We've worked through some big items over the years and months, so you have, you have a week off, and then we'll be here for two regular meetings in September. September eleven also, though, no council, study session that week, as we'll have a delegation that goes to the MML convention. So, we are looking at dates. I know that you all enjoy, and Mr. Van Dyken over there has been very busy with a lot of projects going on around town. So we're looking at one of these nights that we'll do a project tour. We'll get the DeGraff Nature van and give you firsthand view of a lot of the projects that have been going on. And then just some other dates. September two, it's, it's Labor Day already, so that is the truck parade date. The following Monday, September nine, is the start of our inaugural ten-week Ambassador Academy, so looking forward to that. Lot of staff putting in time, and really excited about welcoming. I think we have an inaugural class of twenty-three attendees, citizens interested in learning more about city operations, so we're excited about that. And then, I know you approved it tonight, 'cause we have a lot of great entertainers prepared, but the International Festival is Saturday, September fourteen, if you didn't catch that on the consent agenda. So, things don't seem to slow down. A lot of things going on, and we're thankful to serve the community. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. I have one item this evening, under appointments, communications from the mayor. I do have an appointment this evening. I would ask council to approve the reappointment of Ron Ralia to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term that would expire on June thirty, twenty twenty-seven, and I would be looking for motion in that regard.
So moved.
Moved by Vreeman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Sol. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And I've just got one, one comment, and that is for members of the public who've been watching and noticing that our meetings recently have been shorter than they have been in the past. The theme for the City of Holland this year is "Let's Deliver," which means we have made a lot of promises and a lot of commitments to the people of the City of Holland on a lot of different projects, which means council hasn't been doing as much discussing big things, but if you look from, notice from the agenda, there's still a lot that's going on in this community. And as Mr. Van Beek mentioned, maybe we'll get out and do a tour of the different things that are going on, but I would encourage the public to go out and take a look. If you've been out by the ice park, the steel is starting to go up on some of the buildings. Some of the walls are starting to go up. Vinralty has its, Vinralty Avenue project has been completed up to Sixteenth Street. Fire station at Collin Park is doing great. Mr. Van Dyken tells me that the Waverly Street Fire Station is all done and, and closed out and ready to go, and we've still got a, and, oh, and broadband, my, the broadband folks were in my sister's yard the other day. I'm getting hooked up on Friday. It's exciting stuff going on in the community. So, lots going on out there. That's all I have. Any motions, appointments, communications from council members? Seeing none. One more motion I would entertain.
Moved to adjourn.
Moved by Vreeman. Is there support? Support by Vreeman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.